Jim Frederick.
Here.
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Tony Jones.
Here.
Arthur Eishen.
Here.
John Weddleton.
Here.
Bruce Phelps.
We have a forum.
Nancy, Stacy Dean.
Oh, sorry. You're going down that way.
Yes.
Okay, we have a forum. Mr. Morrison and Mr. Phelps have not arrived yet. Okay, Ms., the next item on our agenda, our minutes for July 13, 2009. For the record, Mr. Phelps has now arrived.
Most of the minutes of July 13, 2009.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing, do you have any?
No.
Oh, Ms. Pease is here also. Is there any objection? Hearing them, the minutes are approved. Mr. Eishen, could you handle disclosures, please?
Yes, ma'am. Let's see, Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
No.
Mr. Frederick? No. Ms. Yoshimura?
No.
Ms. Jones?
On the time extension for the P O B Glen Spur Anchorage, I did not take, I was excused from that, so I will not participate in that, I'll just abstain. Okay? And that's for A and B.
And that's the only one.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dean?
No.
Mr. Phelps? Mr. Weddleton?
I have two small disclosures. One, both relating to the bike plan. And one is I expect that Dan Rosenberg, representing Friends of Bicentennial Park, will speak on it. And I work very closely with that group, maintaining their website and keep closely in touch with it. And then another thing is, in the bike plan, it has a brief mention of subsidizing bike racks. And I've made some early steps in the last year getting into the business of selling bike racks. So it might be construed as a conflict. I mean, I wouldn't mention it if I hadn't done that. So it seems fairly trivial, just thought everyone should know.
In regards to the sale of bike racks, I mean, do you do that by, is it a bid-type thing, for example, when you sell them to the municipality? Or is it a?
I haven't actually done anything yet, except scratch my head and said, let's out there, and I know that we need some.
Okay. Thank you. And I have one disclosure in regards to case G1, the Walmart. I happen to know Mr. Contis was sitting out in the audience. However, I don't think that's going to impact me one way or the other, but we do go to the same church and coordinate quite a bit on facilities management, things like that.
And also, as you know, I had abstained from one of the Walmart stores, but it wasn't because of Walmart, it was because of an adjacent property.
Right. And that doesn't apply in this particular case, right?
No, that does not apply in this case.
Okay, I think we've gone through everything for that.
Okay. So, moving on, we are now at the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, a move for approval of the consent agenda, items 1, A, B, C, and 4, A, and B.
And I have a second from, have a second from Mr. Frederick. Does anyone wish to poll any items?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to poll Resolution 2009-037.
037, that would be 1B.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
I think we need to show that in regard to 4A and B, you will not be abstaining.
I will be abstaining. Okay. Then, is the rest of the consent agenda approved with the exception of 1B? And I'm abstaining from A, 4A and B. Hearing no objection, the rest of the consent agenda is approved. Okay, Ms. Pease, item D1B.
Yes, I just wanted to strengthen our finding number two based on the minutes. And finding number two, the last couple of sentences explain that a comprehensive plan can be amended by a public process, including consideration of community benefit and need. And I just wanted to add one sentence directly from our findings in our minutes.
And to which?
This is on finding number A.
1B?
No, it's finding number A2.
A2, okay.
Yes. So again, it just explains that you can amend a comprehensive plan based on community benefit and need. And I wanted to add a sentence directly from our findings from our minutes. The sentence is, there has not been demonstrated to be a particular benefit or need for this type of density or this type of housing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Also, in regards to that particular Resolution 2009-037, the minutes say that it's approved, but in fact, the commission denied the application. So if you look at the agenda, it says it's an approved resolution. However, if you read our findings, we denied it, so we approved it for denial, I guess is the best way to do it. But it's not approved.
Through the chair, the way our program works and the way we've always set it up is that all resolutions are set for approval, whether the resolution's denying it or not, you're still approving the resolution.
I don't recall it always being that way, because I've seen things on there denied where we actually deny stuff. But if that's the way the program's set up, I guess we're.
Well, it says.
Victims of the system.
Right. Well, it says it's a resolution of denial up at the top. And then it says now therefore be it resolved. And then these findings factor all of the resolves. And if in fact our minutes did reflect that sentence that Ms. Pease is proposing to add, it is appropriate that it be added in there. Is there, did you have more, Ms. Pease?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to point out to Mr. Eishen that our finding number B, the commission denies the application. And then it says passed and approved. So I think we're covered.
Okay. So is there any objection to adding that sentence to our minutes?
Sure.
Okay, hearing none? I'm sorry, to the resolution. Okay, you need to make your motion.
Madam Chair, I motion for approval of the final Resolution 2009-037 with the change I have proposed to our finding number two, the additional one sentence.
And exactly where did you want that inserted? Right after, right at the end of our finding number two? At the end, okay? And is there a second? Nobody was willing to second that?
I don't get it.
She didn't, I know, she didn't use her machine and, there, okay. Thank you, Mr. Eishen. We're starting out slow tonight. Any objections, Ms. Yoshimura?
You know, I was not present when this case was heard, so I will not be voting.
Okay, we will note your abstention.
Thank you.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, we will note that Ms. Yoshimura abstains. Okay. Now, we have dispensed with the consent agenda. We are now moving on to, under public hearings, case number G1. Is this a new public hearing tonight, Ms. Ottor?
Madam Chairman, no. If you recall, the board opened the public hearing at its August 3 meeting.
And then we closed it.
And then you closed it, but asked for additional information on issues that I've added in the memorandum.
Okay. So at this time, we have case number 2009-101 that was postponed from August 3, 2009. The petitioner is Walmart Stores, Inc. And this is for their store in Midtown in the Calais subdivision. And could we have an update from staff for this, please?
Yes, Madam Chairman. As you recall, this is a. Hello? There you go. This is a public hearing site plan for expansion of the Midtown Walmart store. And they're adding an addition onto the south side of the existing structure. Well, I had gone through the review at the August 3 meeting. We've included an additional copy of that packet for your referral. And essentially, the board had asked for staff to address five issues, two of which had to do with issue four and issue five, had to do with taxi station and bicycle racks and the updated T I A. And I have, Mr., can you come here with me this evening to respond to those issues? And issue number one, the board had asked for an explanation of how the 10 percent of the cost expansion is applied. And we've indicated that the 10 percent figure is applied toward bringing improvements to the site, toward compliance in a manner proportionate to the amount of money being expended. Issue number two is, how is that 10 percent determined? And we've given a summary that the breakdown of the cost of the expansion, the total expansion was $2,400,000. The cost of the breakdown of the civil site improvements were $158,800. Landscaping was approximately $258,600. And this came to an estimated 17 percent of the cost of the expansion. This includes the addressing the south parking lot access, widening the south main access drive, providing a pedestrian access from A Street through the main parking lot, and a north sidewalk to the bus stop, sidewalk to Calais, and sidewalk to Benson. In addition to that, we met with, the department met with Walmart and its representatives. And we talked about facade design enhancements, which are in excess of the 10 percent. They have, by looking at the elevational drawing, which would be on page 30 of your packet, and I believe you also received color copies of these documents. And you'll see that they revised the west elevation at both the north and the south end of the building by adding pilasters to break up the blank walls. They've also added them to the south elevation. Along the east elevation, the painting scheme has been changed to provide complementary colors. And we believe that that in fact does meet and comply with what had been proposed, condition number eight. Issue number three had to do with landscaping. And we've included in here a copy of a letter from Land Design North addressing the issue of an increased tree caliber size and why they recommended against that. The, if you recall, Walmart is including in their remodels and their new development in Alaska, something they call an iconic tree. At the board's suggestion, they have moved that tree in the planter bench that surrounds it further north to the new entrance on the south end of the building. And that includes a variety of other kinds of trees and shrubs, as well as they added a bench planter to the north end of the building. And again, that includes a variety of trees and shrubs. I think I'll stop there, other than to say that we're recommending approval of the site plan, subject to the five conditions that you see on pages three and four. For additional explanations on any of these items, Tom Adams is here, representing Walmart. And I think I'll just stop right here.
Okay. What is the wish of the commission? Do you have questions for Mr. Adams or staff? If so, get in, you just get in the queue for me, if you can. Are you trying to? I can't see you, so you're going to have to. No, so just.
Okay.
Go back to the old-fashioned way. Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have a question that won't.
For whom?
It's for staff.
Okay.
I guess I was thinking that we would have a legal interpretation of AMC 2155-130. I read Mr. Weaver's interpretation, and with all due respect, I reread it several times myself, and I couldn't come to his conclusion that the, an expansion, the value of an expansion would be only the shell of the expansion. And I wondered if, after we move on from this case, we could resolve that. Whether, part of the question to staff is, staff mentioned that you looked at nine or 12 other large box retail cases. And I wanted qualification from staff whether any of them were parallel in the sense that there was an expansion, a large addition to the footprint.
Yes, the one that comes to mind through the chair, Ms. Pease, is the South Anchorage Walmart that we did approximately a year ago. They added on to the north end of the building, I believe, and I don't remember if it was, they added to the south end or not. No. But they altered the loading docks, I believe, to the, on the west end. So that's an example.
And on that north end, I was just out there this last weekend, and on that north end, they have, I don't know what the architecturally correct name is, but they have little, they look like little roofs, little canopies that come out on the side of the, that north side of the building. And it almost looks like little doors that would come up, but they don't. It looks, it's just wall. But it has an interesting feature to it, so you're not just looking at bare wall. And then you go around and back, and that's where the loading docks are.
Correct. So if I may follow up, then there's one example from which you, and you found that there was the same policy that you've applied here, that only the exterior shell cost.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other examples were not exterior expansions, I gather?
I believe, and I wasn't involved in this, but I believe there was a Value Village that had an expansion that Ms. Chambers did. That also, I believe, was in the last year, year and a half. Those are the two that come to mind most readily.
Okay, thank you. That was, I think, that was a larger number of cases, but it sounds as if two might have been applicable. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Back to the South Anchorage store? I'm wondering, what was the percent of the improvements then for that store?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Adams.
Okay.
He worked on that project.
So that would be a question then, proportionately, what percent did Walmart spend for those exterior improvements versus what they're spending, proposing?
Would you like to pose that question to Mr. Adams?
I would, but I have other questions.
Okay.
I think we could maybe wait until.
Okay.
And I have the same question that Ms. Pease did. If there were 12 expansions, I was just wondering which ones were applicable? Because this seems to, I mean, this is almost an acre expansion at 38,000 square feet. And that's a tremendous addition. I understand the position that Mr. Weaver has taken. And we are confined here or constrained here by these ordinances, which I find disappointing because I think we could have done a better job with this. I do have some comments that I would hope that the landscaping, I'm wondering how the 18 months occurred. That's really two seasons as far as the installation of the landscaping. I would accept Land Designs North's comments and the comments from the Arborist, but I would just say that if you look to the north and you look to the south, the landscaping is more dense. They are imported trees, and they seem to be doing very well. So I think we need to look at, just not the theory, but the practical application of the caliber of the trees and how the trees are, what kind of trees they are, how they're maintained. And then I'm wondering if there is a way to tie this 10 percent to the building permit evaluation? Because as I look at the cost here, that, I'm not sure where the cost for this store of $2,400,000 is coming from. I think I would feel a lot more comfortable if this 10 percent was tied to a building permit evaluation, or a minimum was set. And if it's this minimum, then it should be no less than that. And if it's, and if the 10 percent is greater with the building permit, then I would like to see it tied to that. Finally, my other question is, if you look at this design from K P B, it says that it's for regulatory approval only, and building images shown are in artistic representation of the design intent. Actual color or materials may vary from those shown due to final design detailing. And I think we would all agree that this is an improvement, and we appreciate Walmart's voluntarily improving the exterior elevation. But I guess I would like some assurance from the petitioner that indeed, because I consider this still minimalist in relationship to other Walmart stores, that this is indeed what it is we're going to be getting in Midtown. And that this is not just an artistic interpretation. So those are my questions.
Okay.
For either staff or the petitioner.
Staff, do you want to respond? Which of the questions you can answer, and then we'll ask Mr. Adams to come forward and answer the rest.
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura. I believe that this is similar, if not exactly, the kind of representation that the board got when we did the South Anchorage review. And I can tell you that it is, the depiction that we were given on the elevations is what was constructed. There was not anything less than what they said they would do. With regard to the other comments, particularly the valuation on Walmart's South Anchorage, I would defer to Mr. Adams.
Okay. Mr. Adams, would you care to come forward?
I've got a question for staff, too.
Okay, we'll get to you in a minute.
Madam Chair, through the chair, Tom Adams, I'm the project manager of Lansbury Associates. We're civil and engineering consultant for Walmart stores on this case. Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Yoshimura's question?
Well, start with your first one.
Okay. Well, for the record, can you assure this commission that indeed what we see here is what we're going to get?
Yes, through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura. I think you'd appreciate, you know, different levels of design, you know, it's kind of standard practice, these disclosures to be placed on these types of drawings. The simple answer is yes. I guess the longer expanded answer is prior and part of the building permit process, you know, we're required to get signups from planning and zoning. And so at the point where final designs are completed and prior to building permits, these artistic rendings, you know, need to be approved by planning, that they are consistent without approval by this board.
Okay. Do you, were you familiar with the South Anchorage store? And what percent of exterior improvements were made in relationship to the total cost?
Certainly, through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura. Lansbury's been a civil and engineering consultant for Walmart for a number of projects, including the South Anchorage expansion. Unfortunately, the architect for this project before receiving is not the same as that involved with the South Anchorage project. But he was also involved with Eagle River expansion, two recent expansions within the municipality. I do not have the percent for you in response. I can suggest to you that the discussions for each of Eagle River and South Anchorage projects did not place as much focus on the cost element as perhaps has been done on this store. I think there was a recognition at that point that the value added to the elevations themselves and the site improvements far exceeded the 10 percent that would have been expected as part of the expansion cost. And so I don't have an answer for you. It's something that we could research and provide through staff if necessary. But I do know that there is more focus on this portion of code, on this project right now than was at the prior two expansions.
I, my untrained eye tells me that in both the Eagle River store and the downtown store, that, I mean, the Eagle River store and the South Anchorage store, that more money was spent on the aesthetics of the exterior elevation than is what is being proposed here. Is that my way off the mark here?
Well, through the chair, I think it's, I don't know that the South Anchorage store, I think it's a very similar expansion and the type of improvements provided to the exterior of the building. Certainly, Eagle River probably far exceeds some of the expansions we're doing, you know, that was either done at South Anchorage or being proposed from Midtown.
And why was that?
Well, through the chair, again, we, I think we explained a portion of that. But part of the answer rests in some of my commentary from the last meeting, in that Walmart's gone through this growth period, whether responding to communities and generating elevations and responsive, you know, pockets of community and comments. And that is, quite honestly, we're getting away from it. They, you know, rebrand themselves and put back their prototype. This store that we're promoting for this project for Midtown, it will be the first brand of elevation that Walmart is proposing for expansion in Alaska, consistent with their new corporate policy to put that in place for other stores, brand new stores, granddad stores, or expansions. And so what we're seeing now is, in effect. And so what we're seeing now is, in effect, what the new face of Walmart will be going forward for their stores. And so the expansions in the past, that reflect that policy.
Do you...would Walmart have any objection to tying the cost, the 10%, to building permit evaluations?
I have to leave it to you. I don't know that I can answer specifically for them without their counsel. I could suggest, though, that Walmart has outlined through all of their projects, and has to be treated similar to all other retailers that come before this commission in the application of municipal code. And I think that's what we're learning in somebody's memorandum from Mr. Weaver, is the application of that portion of code that staff has used is consistent with that applied on other projects. And again, I think there might be right around some discussion to maybe clarify that code going forward, but I'm not really seeking the volunteer to have that code applied differently on this project than was applied to in the past.
Well, I realize that there is a limit to what we can ask you to...ask the petitioner to do on a voluntary basis, and I recognize the constraints that the current code, that exists in the current code. But I would just ask you to have a good conscience about this. It is going to be the largest building in Midtown, and it encompasses on the ground the largest square footage of any property in Midtown. And so in that regard, it is going to be a landmark building. And so it's frustrating that we're going to have a landmark building that is going to be, not necessarily, probably what the rest of the business community and the other community and the rest of the community would really like. Let me just ask you one more question regarding where do these construction...how were these construction costs generated, the $2.4 million?
Well, through the chair, we...Walmart provided those numbers. They have an estimate at their headquarters back in Elkhurst. They generate these values for many of their expansions, and so they're very cognizant of the cost that they are paying for this type of work. And so those values were generated by Walmart.
Were there construction costs if you planned to break ground this fall? Was that taken into consideration, the soil's conditions? Or is this just sort of a generic unit cost that is applied on a nationwide basis?
Well, through the chair once again, and first of all, our intent is not to start construction till early next spring.
Okay.
And so we won't be dealing with many of the weather conditions. And then if you also look on that spreadsheet, there is a multiplier that's applied for Anchorage.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Okay. Mr...I think Mr. Weddleton had some questions first, and then you, Mr. Isham.
So is this not showing up on your computer?
No, nothing's showing up. So people up there, call out.
Okay.
Who is your question for?
I've got three, and I guess I'll start with staff. Can I do that?
Okay. Okay. Just stand down for a minute, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
I'm sure there may be more questions for you.
Don't go far. I could have one after this. On the area or the building expansion is enough to trigger the large retail ordinance law? And is that...is the expansion conforming to current law?
Through the chair, yes.
So if it were a standalone building, this 38,000 square feet, the plantings and parking and everything conforms with current law? Is that correct?
No.
No.
As a standalone building, perhaps not. But what we're applying is the amount of the addition to the existing site, which, as you recall, preexisted the ordinance. And the ordinance says that those that were preexisting, both the building and the site are judged to be conforming to the code. They have rights to what was there, what is there.
I understand. I tried really hard to read that and see that the new expansion should not be built to current standards. And I couldn't see that in there anyway. I mean, it seems the way to read this is the expansion should meet current standards, and then the old part would be upgraded based on 10% of the cost of the project.
I guess, through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, that that's a difference of interpretation that we've applied.
Okay. Okay. Then a quick one for Mr. Keeble. I couldn't quite understand now, the Calais will go onto C Street. Will there be two right-hand turn lanes onto C?
Through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, the westbound Calais will have a through lane going west towards C Street, and it will also have a right turn lane going north on A Street.
Okay, so it's not a double turn?
A single right-hand turn and a single through lane.
Okay. All right, good, thank you. And, okay, so now, Mr. Adams. And this might be redundant, but I went through here, and could you outline quickly what changed between now and our previous meeting on the design? And I can look at the facades and catch, I guess, maybe everything. But then, did you increase, change it on the facade and cut landscaping, or was there a balancing here so your budget remained the same? How did you approach this?
Through the chair, and perhaps best to answer this question, I should invite the architect, who is responsible for the building, obviously. But it briefly, you know, for the most part, it's the building elevations that have been revised since our last meeting. The site plan, as you know, is the same, and we did modify a portion of the landscaping plan in response to some of the conditions that were part of the resolution at the prior meeting, which is the addition of several trees along the Calais Drive frontage. But other than that, it's the building itself has been modified. Perhaps Mr. Jordan can answer that question.
My name is Charles Jordan. I work for Raymond Harrison Architects. We're the design architect for Walmart for the building. All we've done since last team is, again, taking the front, where the two basins are, and actually related to more pedestrian highways instead of being up 30 feet or so, it's now down to 17, 16, 17 feet. But we've added a pan on the north side of the other front, and moved the pan on the south side, make it larger, and make it closer to the basins. On the south side of the building, we've added long pilasters. We've raised a portion of the parapets and give elevation to the parapet. We added the screen wall over at the truck dock. We added gates at the trash compactor. And on the east wall, we've altered the paint colors, so it wasn't just running up in the same color. And we've added gates at the trash compactor that faced east. And on the north wall, we've got the screen wall again at the truck dock. And those things have changed since the last time we seen the elevations.
Okay. Now, these pilasters, that's the vertical...
They're the vertical elements.
Is that in Dante, or?
Those project from the building approximately 18 inches.
On the South Anchorage Walmart, you had like, it was a little different, had a little fake roof.
They had more texture and so on. And like, the areas are probably about 30 feet wide, but had like the difference material in their keep, if I remember correctly, on the north wall.
And you moved away from that for what reason?
A couple of years ago, Walmart had a phone to come up with a brand elevations for Walmart, so that when people see Walmart, it'll be more easily recognized. And this will be one of the first branded elevations in Alaska. But it's spoken in a timeless look instead of outfitted type look.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Isham.
Mr. Adams, when was this store originally constructed, or finished, or whatever?
Through the chair, if I recall correctly, I believe 1994, 1993, '94.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for either staff or Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, ma'am, chair, for staff. Ms. O'Toole, the...are there examples of the interpretation that you can continue to build your project without the new parts of the project being to code? I mean, when there's another phase of a subdivision, or another sort of expansion to a building, don't we apply existing code to the new part of the building?
As I mentioned earlier, the only two that I recall that we've done, that you've addressed recently, was the South Anchorage Walmart, and I believe it was true value. Those included facelifts, but I don't know what else to answer on that.
Any further questions? Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Yoshimura?
Since Mr. Keeble's here, I would like to ask him a question. I'm confused. I mean, I appreciate your memo, and I understand, but how is it that we can rely upon a TIA that's, you know, 15 years old or more for the expansion?
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura. What we did is, it wasn't just basically relying upon the old TIA. We also did some field traffic counting, and also some observations of what was going on during the peak hours around the facility. And that's how we identified the one major hangup was the Calais Drive and A Street intersection.
Is there any procedure that says if a TIA is over a certain age that a new one has to be done?
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, there's no procedure at this point for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Apparently not. It's time for us to go to work, ladies and gentlemen. And I don't...can't see anybody pushing the button, so if someone wants to make a motion, you'll have to...well, you can push in your name to make a motion. That's about the only thing I can see. And I'm waiting. Patiently.
No one wants to touch it.
Somewhat patiently.
Well, wants to go. I'll give it a crack here. Okay, in regards to case 2009-101, for the Walmart Midtown Public Carrying Site Plan Review, I'd move to approve with the conditions stated on our packet, pages three through four.
Three through four.
No.
And there's...second by Mr. Isham. Okay. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Weddleton?
Sure. A few points. This building will look better than it does currently when it's done, and that's a good thing. And we've...the building in South Anchorage, I look at frequently and have really appreciated the improvements there. And so looking at this, I expected more of that, and I don't feel like this is quite up to the standards that we saw in the South Anchorage. So it's a little frightening to think that that's the new iconic Walmart. I don't agree with the staff's interpretation of our code, and I don't feel like this meets the level that I interpret that code at. But I do agree that this is probably not the time to write that code in a way that is different than what we've done previously, though I think that needs to be done.
Further comments? Mr. Isham?
Ma'am, chair, in regards to some of the issue responses on here, I do agree with issue number three on that response, that the fact that large caliper trees are probably not what we...larger caliper trees are not what we need to put in there, because they'll probably have to come from somewhere else, and they'll have deeper roots. And here we have shallow roots, and when you put deeper roots, the trees tend to cloak. So I think that that's a valid answer, so I agree with issue number three. Additionally, when you talk about whether this stuff should apply to, you know, the cost to the inside or the outside, I think the...2155-130 is, I think, pretty explicit on that. The reason I asked the question on when this place was built was because 2155-130 applies to places that were built basically after May 8th of 2001. And so since this was prior to May 8th, 2001, you then have to apply 215320, and then that talks about where you only...you have that 10% limitation. So because of what's in the municipal code, we may not like it personally, but we have to apply the code, you know? And so it's one of those situations where if we don't like the code, then we need to change the code, but we can't arbitrarily make up the code here as a group. So I would suggest that they are within...they're working within the code, and so that it is something legitimate to approve. In regards to issue number four, we were talking about the taxi stations and the bicycle racks, and I think that this does indicate that we are going to have some taxi stations there, which we were concerned about previously, and I think it makes sense not to have them right in front of the door where they're, you know, jostling for fares. They need to be off to the side somewhere. And I really don't have any opinion on this updated traffic impact analysis. I, you know, if the rules say that it's still good, I guess it's still good, again, whether we like it or not. And maybe we need to, you know, get something in code that says there's some sort of a sunset clause on how long a traffic analysis lasts, but right now we have to work within the code. So I am basically going to support this for its approval.
Okay. Any further comments? Yes, Ms. Yoshimura?
I would like to offer a friendly amendment, a couple of friendly amendments. The first would be that all landscaping be installed within 12 months of the CO, or the CCO.
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Middleton?
Yes.
And how about you, Mr. Isham?
Yes.
Okay.
And my second friendly amendment would be that the minimum improvements would be $417,527, or the 10% of the appropriate application... $417,527, or the 10% of the appropriate application for the exterior of, based upon the building permit evaluation, whichever is greater.
I'd accept that.
Could you run that by one more minute?
That the minimum amount to be spent on the improvements, as defined by staff, would be $417,527, or 10% of the building permit evaluation applicable to the exterior, whichever is greater.
Okay, so you've basically picked up their number that they have in this, but then you've also said that it would be based on the building permit cost, whichever is greater. And that would be 10%, or that number?
Four hundred and seventeen thousand, whichever is greater.
Okay, I accept that.
All right, are there any other amendments? Ms. Pease?
Ma'am Chair, I don't have amendments, but I wanted to add some comments.
Okay.
I'm still making up my mind whether I'll support this or not. In looking at the elevations, particularly the so-called back elevation and the left-side elevation, it's hard to call them anything but truly long, undistinguished walls, and I don't think that's a credit to Walmart, no pun intended, or to Midtown. Whether that's their brand or not, we have a code that requires some facade detailing, some height variation, some texture, and these do not incorporate those requirements. I'm really troubled by the fact that the new 38,460 square feet is not being required to be built to the current standards, because I'm not sure we have precedent in other expansion projects in this community for allowing a waiver of existing standards. So that's really troubling to me. And finally, again, with all due respect, when I look at 2155-130, you have to read it in its entirety, but the part of it that jumps out at me is that this section should not apply to the interior remodeling renovation, or appear to interior portions of large retail establishments existing on this date. And to me, if you take that with the rest of the passage, you can remodel your existing building, but if you're doing an interior in a new part of the building, it should be part of the cost. So I'm not sure that we got this right. And I would suggest that part of our findings ask for further clarification on how the cost, required cost of external upgrades would be calculated, both with regard to the text I cited and with regard to Ms. Yoshimura's concern, and also further clarification on whether we should be building expansions to current standards.
Any further comments?
I get the opportunity to speak last, and after listening to all the comments of my colleagues, which I concur with everything everyone has said, but I look at this in, I guess, with a little bit different, from a different view, in part in that the petitioners require, they have the right to expand, they, you know, present a petition to expand, I think there is no doubt about that. And like us, they are required to work within the existing code, and we all are in a position of dealing with a section of the code that is difficult to interpret. And it does need to be fixed, and I would like to see this put on the director's desk as something that needs to be discussed, and we need to get it remedied right away, both for the municipality's benefit and for petitioners and the public's benefit. So I'm not going to address any other issues that my commissioner colleagues mentioned, but one of the things that I see when I look at this is, in addition to what it looks like physically, which I will say, even though there are some portions of it that are not ideal when I look at it, for sure, particularly the left-side elevation and the back elevation, it does have some color, different color scheme, but there's really nothing else out there. When I look at it, I'm looking at pictures in a vacuum, and when I compare this to when I'm out at the South Anchorage store, I'm looking at that in a living setting. There's people, there are activities, there's landscaping, there's movement, and so I'm seeing that facility alive. And I think about the function that not just Walmart, but stores and facilities of this kind serve to the community. A lot of the people in our community have to shop, getting there by cab or by bus, and there are so many different services that they can have access to under this one big route. You can get your eyes checked, you can get your prescriptions filled, you can go to the bank, you can shop for everything, from dog food to stuff for your yard, and holidays, and groceries, and whatever. And so I see it, I guess, maybe that's the sociologist part of me, but I can see it from a different perspective, not just this big, massive building. But it is important that when you put in that landscaping, that it be good and it look good, and you do, you make Anchorage proud, because we deserve to have a nice-looking Midtown, and you're part of our community, Walmart is part of our community, and when we invite you into our community, it's imperative that you be a good neighbor, not only to our citizens that shop at your facility, but to everyone that drives by it, too. So I'm hoping if this is approved, that you will do, really do a good job. Okay? All right, are we ready to vote? Is there opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Do you want to take just a baby break to get out your other materials for the bike plan before we move on? I signed it. It's, that was already signed. Oh, I didn't know I had to sign that one, too.
Call the meeting back to order, and the next item on our agenda is case number 2009-120. The matter is an element of the comprehensive plan for Anchorage, the bicycle plan. And it's the Anchorage Bicycle Plan, a non-motorized transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Edinson, are you going to give a brief presentation or introduction before Ms. Skanki comes over?
Yes, thank you, ma'am Chair, it'll be very brief. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you have before you the Anchorage Bicycle Plan, I wanted to be sure that you have all of the materials that will be discussing this evening before. Ask Lori Skanki, who's the Non-Motorized Transportation Coordinator, to give you a sort of an update of the process that the bike plan has followed to date. You should have a memorandum with today's date, case number 2009-120, shows a brief cover letter, and then is followed by what we consider an issue-response document, and that's what Lori will speak to. In addition, I'm about to hand out some comments, some additional comments, and I know that you all have emailed back and forth on the lightness of these comments, and I believe we have a date scheduled to discuss it further. But what you will have is a repeat of comments that you should have already received, comments from the Anchorage International Airport, as well as one member of the municipality's traffic department or traffic engineering. In addition, our comments that we've received since the comment close date, which I believe was last Thursday. These are comments that have come in, some during the week last week and some over the weekend. We felt like, as we always do, that we would still provide them, provide them to you. So I will hand those out as Lori takes you through the process, but again, as you've already stated, this is the bike plan, it's an element of the comprehensive plan, and of that, an element of our non-motorized transportation portion of the comp plan, and your action, you're being asked to recommend approval or adoption of this document to the assembly. So with that, Lori?
Thank you very much. Just wanted to briefly touch on the plan. The non-motorized plan actually has three elements, the pedestrian plan, which this body saw a couple of years ago, then this bicycle plan, and then we'll be updating the area-wide trails plan. So we have the ped plan, is people walking and getting around town, the bicycle plan is utility cycling, or people going on errands and getting to school and work, on bicycles, and then the trails plan should be more recreational. This really has been an exciting plan, we started in fall of 2007 with about five workshops, and had over 150 people show up, and we asked them things like, where do they bicycle? What's their typical commute time? And from that, we were able to get a lot of information. We had a bicycle focus group of about 15 bicyclists who really, really helped lay some routes down on the map. And then we went out for a public review in March, and that's where most of the comments came from on the issue-response summary that you have in front of you. And I'm fully expecting that with public comment from this body, as well as other public comment, we'll be putting forth another issue-response summary with new information that'll just make the plan even better. But it's been a really great process. We've tried to devise a plan to make bicycling safer and to put people on roads, that was one of the things that I found most surprising. I kind of hacked into this thinking that was mostly the pathways alongside the roads, or the green belt trails, but I heard from people that they really want to be out there in bicycle lanes, that is the preferred method of transportation for bicycle, utility bicycling. So we went in and we measured the roads, and we tried to figure out where we can fit bicyclines in, where we don't have them, and in some of the higher-volume streets, we would still have separate pathways. And we also noticed that the issues with separate pathways are, when drivers come out at a street, there's the whole right hook turn, because as a driver, you're looking left, where you could hit a bicyclist, so that's another reason to put bicyclists on the road, on bike lanes. We used some other processes, once we had the roads are measured, a BCI index was used. And what's the bicycle compatibility index? It was kind of about, I guess, Federal Highway Administration put this together, it's quite a scientific method of measuring which roads feel safe to bicyclists. And so, once we had all the roadways measured, we went and marked them on the map, and that's how we kind of fine-tuned our bicycle network. Some other tools that we used, we've been doing bicycle cans for Bike to Work Day every year, which isn't the best way to do it, because we had a tremendous amount of people bicycling this spring, and of course Bike to Work Day was 50 degrees in the cold. So it doesn't always work, and I know that there's some comments about load sharing, that's something that's really difficult to try and measure. So we'll hear that come up as we go through the evening. But as part of the bicycle network, we have on-street facilities that are bicycle lanes, wide-shouldered bikeways, and bicycle boulevards, and then we have off-street, separate pathways, same-shared roadways, and green belt trails. So with that, I'll just leave it to your comments, and I think there are some members of the public that would like to comment as well, and I know a couple of the commissioners have made comments, so with that, I'll leave it up to you, ma'am Chair.
Thank you. I think it might be prudent that we hold our questions until the end, and when we are raising issues, et cetera. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and invite the public to come forward one at a time. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, you are allowed five minutes, and if you're speaking as an individual, you are allowed three minutes for your testimony. So the first person that would like to testify this evening, come forward.
Yes. Thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to say that when I reviewed this, I found that there were changes in the issue's response that weren't reflected in the printed draft from August 2009, and I wanted to make sure that members of the public had at least in the foyer a copy of the issue's response, so they can check their favorite project or comment and see if the staff responded to it or not.
Did everyone pick up a packet out in the lobby? Okay, you might want to, we'll just stand at ease a minute, so everyone can go out there and pick up a packet. Thank you, Ms. Pease, because there certainly were, there are hundreds of comments that have come in and been responded to. Yes, and well, and then including, and well, and then the ones that were added on the table tonight.
Some were incorporated into the draft, but looking for each and every one, I didn't find that all of them were on the map or in the table, even though the staff said they would put there, so if you do-
Well, and they didn't revise the draft.
Okay.
Well, maybe before, can we dive in now and get a sense from Ms. Skanki, what the status on those? Well, I didn't go through carefully, but I assume that if they said concur, that the change was made in the plan, but what you're saying is that's not the case?
No, well, not in the copy we have.
Let's ask Ms. Skanki, because some of the changes are in there, it's just not all of them.
Ms. Skanki?
Yes, through the chair, Ms. Pease. We were really overwhelmed.
Just a minute, we're going to wait till everybody comes back in and sits down. We're gonna wait till everybody comes back in and sits down.
Okay. We were, needless to say, really overwhelmed with how many comments we got. We were surprised at how many, over 250 comments. So we may have missed some. We would, what we would do is make sure that everything we had in the issues response did match the plan. So the issues response should supersede the plan.
Okay. Thank you. So folks can still come forward and address what their particular concerns are, and you will know whether, we'll know whether they've been addressed in the issue response or not. Okay. Yes, sir. And if you could please state your name for the record?
Be happy. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Dan Rosenberg, and I am representing the Friends of Far North Bicentennial Park. Do you have copies of my comments here? May I be free to pass these out?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I will try to be much clearer than those four pages appear to be. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone responsible for putting the plan together and for producing this plan. We do support it almost in its entirety, and we do encourage the use of bicycles throughout Anchorage Bay for recreation and commuting, and we have been a proponent of recreational bicycling in Far North Bicentennial Park. Our goal, though, is to assure that the goals and objectives of the Anchorage Bike Plan are not in conflict with the core goals of the park, and that this plan's compatible with other municipal planning efforts, and does not set the stage for future conflicts. Okay, with that in mind, and I'll just jump right into the very few things really in the plan that I would like to see addressed. And the first one, I'm going to refer to the map on page 38. In that map, it shows the core bicycle network. And what we are suggesting is that the core network routes that are included, or the core network route that is included in Far North Bicentennial Park be removed as a core network route. And the reason for that is that, under the present condition, many people do commute through Far North Bicentennial Park, including the trails that are included in the core network of commuter routes. But by becoming a core network, it provides expectations for, and these words are from the plan, comfort, safety, and speed. Trail attributes are said to be identified in the bike plan in order to reach major employment in town centers. So current or future users will and may at least expect amenities associated with these attributes, including pavement. And the core bicycle network identifies the most important routes in the network, and routes in the core network are given higher priority for improvement than other routes. And again, we believe this will lead to expectations and justifications for trail modifications, possibly including pavement, riding, et cetera, that are not compatible with the mission of Far North Bicentennial Park. At the same time, we will not exclude anyone currently or with future desires to commute through the park from doing it. We also believe that Elmore provides all of the attributes, or can provide all the attributes necessary for any route in the commute, especially to the U-Ned district, which the Bicentennial Park route is somewhat redundant with. So that is our main thing. That also, that core bike trail that would go through Bicentennial Park and connect the Second Heights does bisect a trail that's currently closed by the parks, by parks that are up because of bear conflicts and safety concerns about bears. Again, we're not advocating for bringing high-speed commuters through that area by paving trails and things. And then on Figure 11, which is also on page 39, and some of this network, core network is also referred to on page 50, and in the map on page 79 in the dayback. But Figure 11 has routes that are indicated as appropriate for utility cycling as well as that core route. And there's a box on the map inset on Far North Bicentennial Park that says trails in Far North Bicentennial Park will be unpaved for the master trails plan. Now, if core network is removed or if it's not, we advocate, of course, for maintaining that statement about the unpaved trails. But it is difficult to read, and I guess my point is, we can't emphasize enough that the plan emphasizes that the trails in Far North Bicentennial Park will remain unpaved. So we'd like to see that much more legible, that statement, and also incorporate it into the text of the plan somewhere, where it again, it emphasizes the trails in Far North Bicentennial Park will remain unpaved. So again, we're advocating to remove core network routes from within Bicentennial Park, including making Far North Bicentennial Park part of the major north-south route, and that Elmore should be the main gist of that route. And make it clear within the plan that the park, that the trails in the park will remain unpaved, including the utility trails. And create some sort of new line or symbol maybe on those maps to clearly de-locate the utility trails in the park that are intended to be left unpaved. So that's really what my comment is about. And I'd be happy if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to address those.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Rosenberg and Ms. Peace?
Through the chair, I do have a couple of questions regarding your proposal. The letter you prepared said that the core network route is the gas line below Hilltop to Campbell airstrip Road. This currently isn't shown on the map Figure 10 nor map Figure 11. Is this something that you feel is acceptable to show on either the core network trail?
Well, perhaps I'm confused. I just was sort of under the impression that this line on map 10 coming off of Abbott Road and running over to the south fork of Campbell Creek was probably going down the gas line, but maybe I'm wrong.
Ms. Skankie's nodding, so I guess that is the gas line.
Is that it?
But if I, from my local knowledge, I didn't, oh, is that, does it then follow Bashar Road? Is that where it's following? Because the road, Bashar Road, isn't shown. Oh, wait, no, that is Bashar Road, okay. All right, so are you, do you want that particular road left on and just the other, excuse me, that particular route left on and just the others that go around Campbell airstrip taken off?
No, no. The others that go around Campbell airstrip, it's my understanding that those are utility, utility routes and somewhat different than the core network. Isn't that correct?
Through the chair, Commissioner Peace. I believe what Mr. Rosenberg is warning is on Figure 10, the core network, we would remove that entire trail through the park, and on Figure 11, everything is okay as it is, and those are, as you surmised, the gas line and then down the road, so.
Correct.
So Ms. Skankie stated it.
It removes, yeah, we just remove the core designation.
Okay.
Which will not prohibit anyone from biking through that route.
It just creates a different expectation.
Creates, exactly. And you want to keep it compatible with the park plan and the trails plan for the park. And even the Anchorage bicycle commuters, and I think I put those comments in my comments too, I incorporated those, to not support those expectations. And the park's plan, the trails plan for the park improvement, improvement to the trails for the park, also de-emphasized pavement.
Yes. Another question. I don't know how recently the Far North Bicentennial Park master plan has been updated. I should know that. But is it better to say that the trail shall be unpaved unless specified in the master plan? Do we want to allow the master plan to make that call, or?
Well, the master plan, you know, goes back to 1985. And I don't believe, now, again, I'm talking off the top of my head, but I don't recall anything relating to paving the trails in the master plan. And I do agree that we should use the master plan as the source of whether, you know, they can be paved or not paved, but that's possible. I'm just not sure that it's possible to go back to the master plan and come up with a clear determination of that.
Okay, are there any further questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Anything at all? Apparently not. Thank you for coming forward.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify? If so, please come forward.
My name's Pam Liddon, and I'm not representing anybody. I have been riding commuting around here for the last five years since I drafted Anchorage. I have submitted some comments, some of which were addressed, some of which were not, in my opinion, adequately addressed, and I'd like to touch on three of those, maybe four of those here. The biggest challenge I have, particularly in the winter, is east-west moving. I live on the east side. We have very good access north and south, and it's maintained around on C Street, down there, and to a certain extent, by the first, they're not really. But east-west I live at is the Chester Creek Trail. And a comment was put in that on page 202, 2.2, one of the goals of this plan is to encourage winter cycling. In fact, the top four of the traffic counts, dubious as they may be, on page 17, they are on Chester Creek Trail. Yet in question number 57 responses, it says that, it seems that the Chester Creek Trail is used more for skiing in the winter than for biking, and it's not right enough to accommodate both. Yet the plan does not address any sort of east-west moving on the byway or northern lights other than general trail use directly. It is not part of the reason, it is not used in the winter, it's not passable in the winter. And to throw people on northern lights the way they're right now is both dangerous and difficult. And so something needs, push us to kind of a shot, either you widen Chester Creek Trail and provide one of use, or you're gonna have to provide some sort of alternate means around northern lights in the winter. Secondly, Melbourne Road has been completely ignored. Page 26, it's number eight, and the number of incidents for roadways, and it has intersections number three and four for the most car bicycle intersection crashes. Yet comment number 183 simply says, yeah, you're right, we need to study it further. That with the development of target up north, the continued development of the town center at the byway in Melbourne, and the fact that you've just completed a bike trail between Creekside and Melbourne Road, Creekside Elementary and Melbourne Road this year, is fundamentally irresponsible. Something needs to be done with that road because people are using it regardless of whether or not they're doing anything, and this plan is specifically the place to do it, not just placate an incident, kick it in and down the hill. Third, I was rather discouraged by the number of comments regarding the proposed trail and the Alaska RIDE away. Of the 366 comments, 11 comments addressed that specific proposal, probably more than any others that are in there. 10 of those 11 comments were against it, yet they all, for some reason, were dismissed out of hand with the exception of one by the Alaska Transportation Project, which actually proposed it. I feel that that really makes this whole process look like a farce. Finally, Mountain View. I ride Mountain View twice a day. There's substantial amount of people that are commuting in or out of the river, ride Mountain View every day. Yet the proposal is to push it on, I believe it's Peterkin Street, which is the, right now, it's horrendously disconnected, and it just, you know, the trail bumps in and everybody scatters. There's a lot of traffic that goes south on Pine Street, bicycle traffic. Melbourne Road is obviously not an option right now because of its lack of facilities. But the proposal is to stick it on Peterkin, which is nothing but a series of stop signs to dissuade vehicular traffic from getting off Mountain View Drive and driving through the neighborhoods. It's, I just ride on Mountain View Drive because it takes rubber, gets the weather thing, and actually, it's closely back in service. I'm generally moving the traffic anywhere with a 20 mile an hour speed limit. But as I've already developed, you're building stores and so forth on Mountain View Drive, why are you pushing all the people that are quote unquote, move on and go those stores off residential streets? From the transportation standpoint, it doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from commissioners? Mr. Isham?
Yes, Mr. Edinson. Could you expand a little bit on that Alaska Railroad comment? You said, you know, there's 11 comments, and 10 of them were dismissed, and one was up there, so explain what the concept is with the RIDE away and so forth, so I understand.
What they had shown initially, and I believe they've actually expanded on it, was to show a path being constructed on the Alaska Railroad, somewhere down the diamond going up towards Minnesota Drive. And comments number 140 through 146 and 149 through 152 all relate to that specifically. You know, it's been phrased in multiple different ways. Colder may not be the best direct route. Colder has numerous landfills, per serving of Colorado Service, seems incompatible. And every single time, they seem to provide sort of a vague answer. The only thing that notes is this route connects Hefton Town Center to Midtown, yet no other than the document have demonstrated that there's any need for that. Regardless, I personally believe that the AC Street north-south bike lane is probably one of the best in town outside of Chester Creek, and it is heavily used.
Okay, are there further questions?
Yes, Ms. Peace. Did you have a suggestion with regard to an alternative to Chester Creek Trail east-west? I mean, are you advocating that northern lights accommodate that traffic, or are there neighborhood or parallel streets?
There really aren't parallel streets because of the way that whole Chester Creek thing, there's big fat and small, by the bus line and everything else. One of two things needs to happen. Either you need to bite the bullet and plow Chester Creek Trail, and if the existing facility won't handle both skiers and cyclists in the winter time, then you need to widen it so it does. Or you're gonna have to provide some sort of alternate means around northern lights itself. There is a sidewalk that's immediately adjacent to the roadway there near East High School. In the winter time, it gets plowed when the city crews get to it, but the snowplows are wind grown ice and snow under that familiar line, and it literally, it becomes a sheet of ice grated towards the road, and I've watched kids slide into the street because they can't even walk on it. And so, I don't know what the answer is, but again, the plan simply dismisses it, but they want to encourage winter cycling, and it's, and I'm not wholly inconsistent.
Madam Chair, through the chair, likewise, Maldine Road, you say don't just study it, but in case you have studied it, do you have alternatives there that you'd like?
I don't know what the answer is in Maldine Road, I realize it's a state facility. I recognize that there's issues with, from a traffic standpoint, even with the overpass gone halfway. We continue to build bike paths to it, but we don't want to do anything to it. And my point is that this plan is specifically designed, the purpose of it is to figure out what to do with it, and they didn't figure out what to do with it, and then the comment they sent in, they simply said, "We need to study it further." But again, if that's the case, then you need to wait until we use the plan until you study it further.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any further questions, so thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
While the next person is coming forward, I wanted to just let everyone on the commission know that the Far North Bicentennial Plan is an element of the comp plan, so it's appropriate to, as if we choose, to make something, some part of this plan be required to be consistent with the Far North Bicentennial Plan. Okay? Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is Bruce Carr, and I represent the aforementioned Alaska Railroad. Madam Chair and members of the commission, I'm the Director of Strategic Planning for the Alaska Railroad. In the interest of full disclosure, I also sit on the Technical Advisory Committee for AMAS, but I'm not representing them, I represent the railroad tonight.
Okay.
The proposed Anchorage Bike Plan is a great step forward in creating alternative transportation systems for our Anchorage citizens. There are many recommendations in this plan, which, if implemented, would be a great step forward in putting the comp plan into place. As a corporation, we enjoy our employees that ride their bicycles. We have people from South Anchorage, East Anchorage, West Anchorage, Eagle River, and I'm told even further out as far as Peters Creek. I do not do that, especially not from Peters Creek. Every plan has a long number of issues with it, and I'm sure you've heard a lot, as Ms. Pease mentioned, there are over 200 comments. As was previously mentioned, there's about 11 associated with the Alaska Railroad. And I'd like to draw your attention specifically to Figure 11, which was on page 39. And just open up the book if you have that and compare it to page 38. The proposed network on page 39 depicts a separated proposed multi-use pathway along the Alaska Railroad right of way for approximately 15 miles, from near part of Marsh, which is about mile post 100 on the Alaska Railroad, all the way to our headquarters building, which is about mile post 115. Now, a portion of that path is already covered with the Tony House Coastal Trail, but this is an extensive extension of that trail system. First, I need to be clear, make sure there's no misunderstanding. The Alaska Railroad allows trails in its right of way. We work closely with communities to make sure that we have appropriate and safe crossings of the Alaska Railroad. However, those are perpendicular crossings. The longitudinal pathway in the urbanized industrial zone area of Anchorage, such as the proposed path, represents a significant and unwanted challenge to safe train operations and is an inherent dangerous safety hazard to the public. The Alaska Railroad right of way is approximately 200 feet wide. Please refer to the following picture. This piece of pipe is approximately 80 feet long. As you can see, it broke its securing and swung off the car and is approximately 60 foot into a corridor. There's one chain that kept that steel tubular piece on the Alaska Railroad railcar, one chain, otherwise it would have been a tumbling tumbleweed of several thousand tons moving along our right of way. We move thousands of carloads of lumber, insulation, tubular pipe, and other heavy equipment that are secured by luminous 40-foot, 2-inch-wide steel bands on each railcar. They occasionally break under the extreme tremendous pressure of moving from Highway 48 all the way up into Alaska. Imagine a 2-inch steel rod being moving 45 to 55 miles an hour. It's like a scythe going through the air. We have pictures of metal signs cut in half. I showed it to think that could happen with people walking along the pathway. I want to assure you, that this doesn't happen every day. It only has to happen once, to impact someone's life permanently. The Alaska Railroad right of way is a safety corridor. We are serious when we say safety is our number one priority. This attitude does not just pertain to our employees, we just don't have a sign up in the front door that says, "We protect our employees." We take this as a right, as a sacred responsibility to protect everybody that uses the Alaska Railroad, whether you be a passenger, a contractor, or someone walking along a path or crossing the Alaska Railroad. Page 122 mentions the Alaska Department of Transportation and the Alaska Railroad are working on a joint policy to design crossings, design issues of crossings. This joint policy is directed toward road crossings of the railroad, not bicycle crossings. An approved at-grade crossing of the rail may be, and in most cases, could be, an appropriate spot for a crossing, a perpendicular crossing. I will conclude very quickly, Madam Chair, if you can. Our pathway raises, as Mr. Rosenberg mentioned, that proposed pathway on that page is the soundbite for the proposed plan. It raises unreasonable expectations in the public's mind. As mentioned previously, there's paths along Edna, Sioux Highway, C Street, and other north-south corridors. We strongly urge you to recommend to staff to remove the proposed crossing from most proposed pathway along the Alaska Railroad right of way. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Are there questions for Mr. Carr? Yes, Mr. Isham?
Mr. Carr, in regards to anybody putting a bicycle path there, if the state didn't give them the authorization to do it, they couldn't do it anyway, whether there was a dotted line on the map or not, right?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, that is correct. The trail has to be permitted, and with the conditions of what I just stated to you, it is unlikely we would permit a trail, a longitudinal type trail. But again, it raises an expectation in the public, but there's a lot of issues that need to be worked out. One of the issues is liability. The municipality, with no exception right now, doesn't accept liability for having a trail along the Tony House Coastal Trail, for example. It's not permitted. Since 2001, they refuse to pay for it, so the municipality is hanging out there. And as we all know, legal liability is an extremely important thing if something happens. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weddleton?
Thanks. So when you go on the coastal trail, you're right beside the train tracks for some section, and I've never felt in danger, maybe I will now, but has there been any trouble with that?
One of the reasons of the current municipal position, through the chair, to Mr. Weddleton, is you recall, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, perhaps a little bit later, the number gets fuzzy as I get older, there is a fenced area toward the Anchorage, Alaska Railroad headquarters going south toward Elders Bay Park and on further south. The fence was not well-maintained by the municipality, and the woman made his way through that fence and tried to jump on the train and lost both legs. It only has to happen once again, and the issue is, is do you put the public day in and day out in that type of a circumstance? And our answer, and what we recommend here is, no, remove it from the plan. You have adequate north-south corridors that actually connect places that people want to go to.
Are there further questions, Ms. Pease?
Yes, how would the risk of something falling off a train, heaven forbid, differ from the exposure that a bike has in a bike lane with a tire coming off, gravel coming off a truck? It seems to me that the train frequency would at least be quite a bit less than the truck, freight, car, boat trailer frequency if one of us is riding in a bike lane or on a shoulder. So, you know, I guess it's a matter of statistics probably, but the statistical incidence for trains, the passage of trains is how frequent, how many a day?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, the only recognition of that is this. There is a national policy to eliminate at-grade railroad crossing deaths. National policy. Last year, there was a neighborhood of 400 people killed of railroad crossings nationwide, and yet the national policy is to eliminate that. Compare that to highway deaths, where we accept 40,000 on an annual basis. Now, I can't tell you whether or not you can eliminate the, you know, the highway accidents and deaths. I don't think it makes good public policy to put bicycle lanes on roads which are slick, icy, perhaps poorly maintained, potholes, et cetera, but that's something for the municipality to answer. I'm not addressing that. I'll leave that to other people to address.
And, had one other question? With regard to use of the railroad corridor, doesn't the, hasn't the Alaska Railroad leased out some of its railroad corridor for other uses? And I recall, perhaps, yards, residential yards in the area around Oceanview?
Thank you, as part of the testimony I want to get to, if you could refer to the top part of the picture there. One of the issues that we have that was injured by staff in another area was they declined to think that Diamond Boulevard was a good spot for a bike trail because of the high VCI and large number of curb cuts. And you look at the top along here, this is just five miles of the Alaska Railroad, and two of those yellow spots, if you can see those, represents an industrial track that comes off of the Alaska Railroad Main Line and goes into a private industrial area. But each one of those tracks represent at least two rail crossings, you've got to get across two rails. So there's really 26 curb cuts there. There have been a lot of incidents that we've been told anecdotally by bicyclists of the problem of crossing railroad tracks, because they're slick and we're expecting to get caught. So if you go on and look at that, the north side of that track, in other words, where that is, is not an appropriate spot for a bike trail. So then you say, well, look at that wide open space that looks south. The Alaska Railroad is expanding its services. We have a responsibility to protect the corridor so that we can double track, and far into the future, we'll have a way to triple-track the Alaska Railroad. So we preserve those areas along our 200-foot corridor right of way to protect the ability of the railroad to expand in the future.
Okay. Mr. Frederick, were you trying to be recognized, because it's not working with the, okay. Mr. Weddleton?
Maybe you got cut off on this topic too, but you were, is there an issue with perpendicular crossings in the design? Were you starting to get into that, as far as the design of the actual crossings?
Through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, no, we don't have an issue with appropriately-designed perpendicular crossing. If there's an issue, it's the maintenance of those things, because the perimeter, which in this case would be the municipality of Anchorage, has got to maintain those crossings. They're very slick, there should be signage that quote says, "Get off your bike and walk." The concrete crossings that we have in place, and some of the roadways crossings, get extremely slick, and it does happen where people hit those crossings and they're flailing, and that creates a problem. But no, appropriately-designed perpendicular crossings at a current load crossing is an appropriate spot for them. Right, thank you.
Okay. Apparently, there are no more questions. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. With your permission, I'll pass out the bulk of my comments.
Okay, that would be fine. Would the next person who would like to testify come forward, please?
Hi, my name's Carol Fink, and I'm here on behalf of the Alaska Public Health Association. And the Alaska Public Health Association is a group of public health professionals, as well as physicians, nurses, and people who work in the environmental health. And we have about 200 members, and I'm just here to commend the efforts of the Anchorage Bike Plan and convey that the Alaska Public Health Association strongly supports adopting this plan. We applaud the municipality's efforts to promote, encourage, and support utility biking, a physical activity that can be incorporated into daily living. Our organization recognizes the health consequences of overweight and obesity in Alaska and the proven role of physical activity in maintaining healthy weight. Regular physical activity can cut the risk for developing depression, diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure, obesity, stroke, certain kinds of cancers, and all in all are the health issues. The bicycle plan is an evidence-based strategy recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to increase physical activity, and we're quite happy to know that the evidence is there, that building urban design and abandoned policies can effectively increase physical activity in our population. I also want to, so that this is a step in the right direction, obviously, there are some deficiencies and some things missing from the bike plan, but overall, the bike plan is a great step in the right direction on behalf of our fair. I'd like to suggest that adopt it with appropriate amendments as we hear tonight.
Okay. Did you have something you wanted to turn in or hand out, or?
No, actually, in my comments, in more detail, on page 20, the page numbers are interesting, but page 20 of the last section.
Okay, so you don't have anything in addition to that?
No.
Okay. Are there questions? Yes, Mr. Weddleton, and then Ms. Pease.
So now you've left it hanging? What amendments?
We support the overall, you know, design of a bike plan being adopted by the municipality. As far as the Alaska Public Health Association is concerned, we just want to get people active on their bikes and have them in a supportive environment with policies that support them. We're not as interested in the very detail of how they get from A to B, that they get to A to B safely.
We're here to do those details. Are they in your comments here, the details? So you sent in some comments, and you had some?
I'm just saying that we support the bike plan as written at this time.
Okay.
And hearing amendments tonight that I wasn't aware of, so, as those are appropriate.
Okay, did you get a copy that were out in the lobby?
I just got it, but I haven't had time to read every single comment in there, so, yes.
Ms. Pease?
I had the same questions, Mr. Weddleton. Give us the details, but, anyway, thanks.
That's it.
Anything further from anyone? Any other questions? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out tonight. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Mark Butler. I live in the North Star Community Council District, which most people wouldn't know where that is. That's kind of by the outer moon park. We used to call it Lois's, likes the mad, the modest mice. Now we think it's really lower downtown, and the reason people are moving there is because they might not be afraid to live on top of here, but they can afford to live very close. It, as we've had some conversations here recently, it's kind of a new organism in one of those neighborhoods that's turning around because of its location and its amenities. One of the amenities is being the Chester Creek Trail, which though Chester, Chester Creek Trail is not named after an Alaskan, it's named after someone who never came here, is my understanding, but of course, many fly share the Fly Share Trail, and maybe even Sullivan McComber's mother. This is the superhighway of bike trails in Anchorage. When we've done our bike-to-work studies of the spring, the Hefton Park has coordinated it, I volunteered a number of times, and it's amazing how many people go to work on that trail. We at the bottom here are trying to connect to Midtown and to allow those people who often pull, we live in the Midtown Spinali areas, to get down to the bike trails and get down to the parks, and we are trying to get up there to use those businesses. And the first part of that is Spinali Road and the portion that this body approved. part of that is Spremard Road and the portion that this body approved previously. It's underway right now, and by next, early midsummer, we'll have from Chester Creek Trail to the top to Hillcrest Dam. And I'm personally speaking in favor of it. I realize rather than the broad picture, the details in my way, and find it very satisfactory. A part of it is being put into place right now under contract and others we hope will be soon. So obviously, it's different parts, different types of trails and things in different situations, but I'm very much in favor of it, so I think this is a huge step forward. And property value-wise, we've had a lot recently in the national press about how walking neighborhoods, biking neighborhoods, those with access to businesses, parks, and other facilities are more valuable than park areas that are not. So from a personal property interest to my financial interest, I have an interest in connecting my neighborhood even more and more, and my neighbors as well. So I'm not in favor of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions? Apparently not. Thank you, sir. Okay, who's next? There's got to be somebody. I would invite those of you that still wish to testify this evening to please come down toward the front. Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Mark Fitch. I'm not officially representing anyone, but I should note that I'm a board member of the Trail Watch Safety Program, which is under Parks and Rec, and I'm also an employee of the university and on one of their facilities' boards in terms of planning. I will make a couple of comments related to that. This plan is very important to the university. I'm a faculty member there. When I received notice of the various levels of review of this plan, I've had no trouble finding a half dozen students in current classes to whom this is vital. More, perhaps, than many others, students tend to not have high income. They tend to like low-income transportation methods. There are many cyclists in the university who have been working hard in the past years to increase the safety on campus of first cyclists and other non-motorized transit methods. Personally, I'm very strongly in favor of this plan. There, of course, have been comments tonight about individual changes that could be made. I do not deny that there are certain improvements that can be made, that it is important that this be done. One of the things in the plan is that I believe to be particularly important, and am very concerned that it be kept in the plan, is not about the exact routes, but some of the details of how the roads must be constructed. I must cross Tudor Road to get from where I live to the university, and I have multiple routes for this. In the summer, I can use the Toja Track Bridge, which unfortunately, right now, is closed for construction, along with the crossing at Elmore, which is closed for unrelated construction, and apparently, no one is required to talk to anyone else, and so closing one detour is quite legal in this city. The other one, however, crosses at Piper, which I must use in winter, and the trail is not feasible. The problem there is it is a signalized stoplight. That means it does not turn green unless there is a sufficiently large mass of metal sitting on top of a sensor. As you can see, where cyclists were not particularly massive nor are we metal. Matter of fact, many of our bikes aren't even iron. We do not register with the signals that are in there. I'm only aware of one such crossing in the entire city that works for cyclists, and I'm not sure why. And that one is the one that connects Providence to the university. It does transfer for some reason. The plan does call for appropriate signalized intersections, but if they do trigger for cyclists, if we don't keep that in there, we don't make that policy, many of the routes, especially the on-road routes, become pointless because we would sit there, I'd be in a running situation with a car behind me waiting for him to start honking at me because I'm not moving, but I can't because I have a red light, and he's too far back to trigger the signal. It's a design flaw on Elmore's self-bound AT Tudor that does not signal. So that particular issue is the one which I am most concerned.
Okay. Could you sum up for us, please? Did you have a couple, any other points?
No, that was my main concern.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Fitch?
Yes, Mr. Fitch? So your concern about recognizing bicyclists is when they're running parallel to the traffic, not crossing the traffic. If you've got those buttons that you can push that let you cross the road, I assume those work, right?
They do, however, if you're on road on a bike lane, you have no button. And since the most dangerous crossing for a cyclist is when they're off-road, state statistics in this state and other states indicate that the most dangerous place for a cyclist to be is off-road on a trail. Almost all the non-alcohol-related accidents occur when a motorist ignores, motorists have a tendency not to look both ways before crossing a street. They turn, especially right-hand turn. They turn, they do not look, and that is where the vast majority of accidents not involving alcohol occur. So getting off and hitting a button is actually dangerous. When I do that, because I'm forced to do that at Piper, I have a few people I can identify by face who inevitably violate right-of-way laws because I have gotten into that and they no longer see me. But if I'm able to merge into traffic and stay there, no one violates the law and I cross safely. So it is important that we be in the roads where the bike lanes are designed, but if we are in a bike lane, we need the signal to trigger for us.
Technologically, is that stuff available that you know of?
Yes, it is. And that is referenced in the plan someplace. So this is an item that is in the plan right now. I'm simply advocating strongly for it out of personal experience.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, one. Well, one is a comment. You just get like a 20-pound block of iron and hang it from your frame right there.
That would certainly increase my leg strength.
So looking at the UAA, trails in the UAA area, and this trail, you've looked at it network, and this all works and connects people where they want to go?
The, my true subject, the university on its own property has been working to both increase the maintenance. We just did some recently on account of the assault, attempted assault that occurred on campus. That was not on the trail. The person had made the mistake of going into the woods alone. But we've done some extra maintenance for those kinds of safety things. We're also attempting, and I speak here from experience, but not officially for the university, we have been trying to plan bike lanes on railroads, the new Loop Road that goes around. So if you enter at the stoplight on the east side of Providence by the library, the road now forces one to go east all the way around the buildings there, following the marsh, and then circle all the way around. That increases safety on campus. It also provides a safer connection on the Goose Light Connector, the Campbell Creek to Chester Creek Connector. Traditionally, cyclists do not follow the official union route. They take a shortcut through university property, which has been closed since we've been constructing two buildings back on that property. At the beginning of this semester, we reopened that. We have not been able to afford to line a bike lane. We are a state institution, and we are not usually funded in full for our construction requests. We weren't able to afford to line it, but we have designed that to be safe. So the university on its property, which it controls under state regulations, is building internally good systems. The other side of your question, sir, is how do we get there in the first place? The plan is reasonably good for that. Some people tonight have already commented on, if I won't repeat what they said in terms of that Northern Lights does not have in every section a good connector back and forth. That's an issue. The lack of signalized crossing on Lake Otis is an issue. There are a lot of students who live on the west side of Lake Otis, just near the university and the elementary and middle school there, and there's very few safe ways to cross that. Thirty-six on that side is not designed for cyclists in any way, shape, or form. On the university hospital side, it's just been redone, or is, they're finishing it right now. I'm sure you're well familiar with those plans, having approved them. So on our side of things, they're reasonably well-designed, so long as, and this is not so much a comment for this plan as another issue that will be before you someday, potentially too soon. It's currently euphemistically called the Northern Connector, i.e. what will be done, if anything, to connect Elmore to Begaw. The way that is handled could severely damage cyclist access if it's not done correctly. But that one is still very early in its planning stages. Those are the only ones in which I have current knowledge. I'll let others who are here comment on the other access.
Actually, so that's what I was looking for, is one of these trails way through the center relies on that road being built. So if that road's not built, are you still covered pretty well getting from one place to the other?
The question is not if the road is built, but where. And there are officially three or four routes. I believe the unofficial favorite heads along the borderline between UAA and APU property. APU is very fond of this road because it would open up some small amount to develop the land for them. Again, I do not speak officially for UAA, but we sense that most faculty and staff, as we would rather the road, won't build because it does nothing for us, and the state has a habit of taking our land for roads and giving us nothing in return, and we can't build enough buildings as it is. Most of the students who come in, and I have checked, and this is true on roads for motorists as well as non-motorists, north-south is not an access issue for the university. East-west is. We can get north-south to a place. We just can't get east-west along there. And that's not as much of an issue for cyclists as it is for motorists. Not in my experience.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming forward this evening. We appreciate your testimony. Who's next? Yes.
Hello. I guess I'm supposed to be addressing you, or just everybody in general?
All of us.
Okay.
And we need your name.
My name is Oscar Avellada. Should I spell that?
We're going to need you to spell that for us.
Oscar, A-S-C-A-R.
Okay.
Last name, A-V-E-L-L-A-N-E-D-A. It's like first grade all over again.
All right.
Okay. Listening to the comments here and reading through there, it's obvious that this bike plan is not perfect. But, wait, let me start busting up. I represent myself. I've been a cyclist for three years, now a fifth year old, and as the next generation of young professionals coming into this community and staying in this community, as well as the next generation of cyclists I'm seeing on the road, I'm concerned about the municipality's collective consciousness of like what road share really is. This plan may never be able to make everybody happy or take into account everybody's needs. It's just not possible. But what is, I think, going to be a big difference is the amount of like infrastructure presence that's going to be available from what comes from this plan on the road, whether it's a sign or lane on the road, is going to bring to like the visual level for drivers and other cyclists and pedestrians to be conscious of the road. That is my biggest conflict. We have, of course, inconsiderate cyclists, just like we have inconsiderate drivers. But the main thing is what it's boiled down to is, I have noticed safer driving when there are more cyclists in the road. The area between Spremard and Minnesota, between Fireweed and about Arctic, is a pretty safe area during the summer because there's not a cyclist in the road. There are people just starting to park their cars and walk the area as opposed to drive and park. It's just a lot more effective to do. It slows people down when people see standing, when drivers see clusters of people standing at the corners of intersections actually using the stoplights. For the most part, we've been a city that's just driven all the time. I've noticed more people, partly because the students who graduate from my class and the classes before, who moved to Portland, come back, think about the bike culture here. And they'll continue with it because it's something recreational, it's easy to do. It may not necessarily carry over into the winter, but it definitely has its effects in the summer, and it puts a lot of people on the roads and puts a lot of people on the sidewalks. I have only been hit because I've been riding on the sidewalks. I choose to ride on the road because it's the only place where I'm acknowledged. And that's because, as a driver, I do the same thing. I'm not always conscious of that last four feet. So to me, the bigger picture is that whether it's like painted bikes on the road or signs, the more visuals you can get out there, the more conscious this community is going to get about the road being shared by others. So more people on the road, people hopefully slow down and at least take consideration of who's there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the commission? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out tonight. Who's next?
Good evening. My name's Brian Mittmans. I'm with the Bicycle Commuters of Anchorage. Bicycle Commuters of Anchorage, or BCA, is a nonprofit organization that was formed in the spring of 2008 to do the following. First, to educate both motorists and bicyclists about how to share the road safely. Second, to advocate for improved bicycle transportation infrastructure and safer bicycle laws. And third, to encourage bicycle use as a sustainable, healthy, economical, and environmentally-friendly form of transportation. BCA appreciates the significant efforts the municipality of Anchorage has taken to create this plan. It's an excellent first step forward and necessary to set forth a blueprint by which Anchorage can become a bicycle-friendly city. BCA would like to acknowledge the hard work invested by Ray Skanky and John Spring. Their efforts should be applauded. BCA looks at the Anchorage Bicycle Plan in the broader scale and does not necessarily focus on any one particular route. However, BCA may have comments pertaining to some of the issues that have been raised this evening. Prior to addressing any of those, I'd like to touch on some of the compelling reasons why it's important to support bicycle transportation and specifically this draft plan. First, bicycling, while the use of vehicles means cleaner air for all Anchorage citizens and does not further contribute to greenhouse gas emissions. Second, bicycling, as we've heard earlier, has numerous health benefits. It fights obesity, diabetes, heart disease, and reduces stress and likelihood of depression. Third, the benefits also result in greater social capital, bringing families and communities together. Additionally, benefit, all of these benefits are easily achieved because 40% of national trips are less than two miles, an easy bicycling distance. Bicycling also has tremendous economic benefits to the city of Anchorage. The cost of bicycling, per person, commuting by car, in cities with improved bicycle infrastructure, have seen rising hand values to benefits to local businesses such as restaurants and shops. Installing bicycle infrastructure according to the Anchorage Bicycle Plan will lead to increased bicycle use, which will in turn result in all the benefits I just enumerated, creating a more sustainable and livable city. Some basic assumptions with respect to bicycling are important when considering the importance of this bicycle plan. First, people do ride a bike, especially in the summer but also in the winter. Second, people are afraid of being hit, and that is why it's so important to have adequate bicycle infrastructure. Third, people prefer the bike, prefer having bicycle facilities or infrastructure that separates them from motor vehicles. Fourth, bicycling infrastructure will result in significant increases in bicycle ridership. Fifth, implementation of this bicycle plan is not costly in the overall picture. Even the leading bicycle city in the United States, Portland, Oregon, with the most advanced bicycle infrastructure in the United States, has been able to accomplish its bicycle plan for less than 1% of its transportation budget. Sixth, making Anchorage more bicycle-friendly will result in a more healthy and wholesome community. It's about neighborhoods, community, and people, not just bikes. Understanding these assumptions is important to understanding why it's so necessary to adopt, to have a single approve of this plan. One comment BCA would like to make with respect to this plan is the focus on bike lanes. Bike lanes are only the first step. If we divide bicycle users into groups, there are four basic categories. The first is the 1%, the 1% who are, excuse me, the 1% who are strong and fearless and will bike in any conditions regardless of the bicycle infrastructure available. Those people are already on the road. The second group is the group that's considered to be enthused and confident. They're considered to be 5% to 6% of the possible mortal share. These people are the ones that will get onto the roads with things like bike lanes, shares, bicycle boulevards, things that are enumerated in the Anchorage Bike Plan. That gets Anchorage to a potential 5% to 6% mortal share of our transportation use. BCA advocates that the bicycle plan's long-range goals include infrastructure that will get to the much larger audience, the 60% to 70% of the population, the third group. This group is the core group of people who want to get on bikes but will not, and bike lanes will not get them there. This group is afraid of being hit. This group is your mother with a child on a bike, and a bike lane does not provide the requisite sense of security. What this group requires is more advanced bicycle What this group requires is more advanced bicycle infrastructure such as cycle tracks or other bicycle infrastructure that separates bicycles from moving vehicular traffic.
Can you sum up more quickly?
Ultimately, if one is able to make mothers feel safe getting on their bikes with their children in tow, then the municipality of Anchorage is truly become bicycle-friendly. In order for that to be accomplished, the bicycle plan needs to consider not just the massive bicycle lane network, but how we're actually gonna create bicycle infrastructure that separates bicyclists from motor vehicles. BCA recommends the adoption of the bicycle plan and encourages the municipality to consider the inclusion of safer bicycle infrastructure that is seen in many European cities and is now being replicated in the lower forty-eight in cities like New York and Portland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Pease?
Hi. I have a question on a specific design issue, and I wondered whether the bike commuters have recommendations on, or position on roundabouts and what makes riders feel confident going through the roundabouts? Because we heard earlier that, I think it was Mr. Ave Anida say that, or someone else perhaps, say that getting off your bike and crossing at the crosswalk is the most dangerous thing to do, and yet that's what is being advocated for some roundabouts at least, multi-lane ones?
BCA does not have a position on roundabouts. I think it's an engineering question that's beyond my own personal expertise. Some of the basic principles of making bicyclists safer on the road can be incorporated into roundabouts. Ultimately, when you have bicyclists in a situation where they're not, where their travel lane merges with other travel lanes, it's a question of education, and there are considerable problems with motors being educated in roundabouts. So, you can have a complication when you introduce a new travel lane that isn't, that isn't, that provides some specific separation from the motor vehicles. But, it's, it's an issue that BCA doesn't take a position on, given its inexperience.
Okay, thank you. And one other question. What's the fourth category of riders?
The fourth category, the last twenty percent, and those people are people that would never get on a bike.
Okay, thank you.
And those numbers, I didn't pull those out of your, those come from experts, planners in the lower forty-eight who have spent their entire lives dealing with bicycle transportation.
Okay. Mr. Riddleton and Ms. Jo Schimura.
Okay, Mr. Lemmons, I have a couple of questions. One, we've had suggested that the route along the Alaska Railroad should be taken off the suggested routes. What do you feel about that?
I'd like to comment briefly. I strongly understand that Ms. Genke and Mr. Springer have received numerous comments and I, and no way want to hold them accountable, but I would like to note that in BCA's comments, we strongly recommended that separated pathway along the Alaska Railroad corridor be considered. So, while we did hear earlier this evening that only one entity, the Alaska Transportation Priorities Project, supported it, BCA also supported the consideration of the pathway along the Alaska Railroad in the bike plan.
And then we heard that, suggesting that the north-south route through Bicentennial Park be downgraded from a core route to kind of ordinary unpaved route. What's your sense of that?
With respect to far north Bicentennial Park, BCA's position is that the park in no way should be upgraded. BCA's position is that the commuters who utilize the far north Bicentennial Park do so in part because of the wild and natural setting it has, and we do not recommend or advocate for upgrading any trails. We believe the commuters who use those trails use them because of the current state they're in.
Thank you.
Ms. Jo Schimura?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if you have any winter city comparables? You know, you've talked about Portland and a couple of other areas, but I'm wondering about Minneapolis, Vancouver, Calgary. Do you have any information about those types of winter city activity, winter cities and the bicycle, commuter bicycle use during, in those cities?
I cannot provide you with specific statistics as to bicycle use in other winter cities. I would just like to note that we see a lot of discussion in Anchorage DMOs and other forums with respect to winter bicycle use and the fact that it's just a very small mortal If we look to other cities, there are numerous examples that have similar climates and deal with similar winter issues as Anchorage, where bicycle use, and I don't have specific statistics, but bicycle use is a very important and significant mortal share. In Europe, cities like Stockholm as well, Copenhagen, are all incredible bicycle cities and perhaps a little bit more temperate, but they all deal with snow. If we look to North America, some of the best examples for bicycle use in the winter are Minneapolis. Incred, Minneapolis has many attributes that are very similar to Anchorage's in that the basic core of their network is multi-use pathways. They've got a great green belt system, and they have ridership throughout the winter, and they have an incredible bicycle network. And Minneapolis has been rising amongst the cities in the lower forty-eight as a very bicycle-friendly city. If we go north of the lower forty-eight border and we look to Canada, Toronto and Montreal are both excellent examples. Vancouver's a little more temperate and similar in climate to Portland or Seattle, where they do have a lot of rain but not as much snow. But if you look east, you look to Montreal or Toronto, you see excellent examples of cities that are far, far ahead of most, lower forty-eight cities and certainly far out of Anchorage with respect to bicycle transportation and see ridership year-round. And if you would like more information, BCA would be more than happy to furnish you with information on that subject.
I'm curious about your comment about the multi-use path. Are you supportive of that as opposed to a bike lane in major arterials?
I'm not sure. Perhaps you misunderstood, or maybe I'm misunderstanding you. When you say I supported the multi-use path, I'm not sure in what context you're referring to.
You're referring to Minneapolis and having green belts with multi-use paths.
Right.
Use more bicycle commuter.
Sure. I only brought up as an example of the core of the Minneapolis system was a green belt system, which is similar to what Anchorage has. On top of that, they built an entire bicycle network that spreads across the city, and you see ridership throughout the city in winter. The bicycle, what's similar with Minneapolis is that we have a core green belt, and that is what, that is where we currently see a lot of ridership. But when you put on top of that a bicycle network as is proposed in the Anchorage Bike Plan, you'll see ridership move and increase from one point eight percent, perhaps at its highest in Anchorage, to five to six percent. And in Minneapolis, that, they have already accomplished that, and they see the ridership in the winter, not just limited to the multi-use paths.
Any further questions? Apparently not. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Can I see a show of hands of how many more people wish to testify this evening? Just a couple, it looks like. Okay, come on down and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Thomas Jensen. And I'm a member of the Bicycle Commuters of Anchorage, I'll just be representing myself. Two introductory notes. Number one, I just want to thank the city staff and Maurice Genke for their large amount of effort in preparing the plan. And secondly, I just want to encourage this body to recommend the plan for approval. The only issue that I have is to employ the city to think sort of creatively as they create bike lanes on the roads, which I am in full support of. I think it's the right thing to do, but during the winter and shoulder seasons, thinking creatively about how to make that safer, a safer issue and sort of looking, I don't know what Minneapolis does, I don't know what northern cities do. I'd be happy to look into that, but I consider myself a reasonably competent cyclist and have several times during the year do not ride on the roads due to the icy conditions. And so, I just, that was just a note to the city and my only sort of issue with the bike bike line, that it doesn't adequately address that particular issue.
Okay. Any questions?
Ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, through the chair. So, is your issue primarily a road maintenance issue? Or are the margins of the road tend not to be as clear, clean as the, as the car travel paths?
I think it's primarily the second in that the, in that the plowing often sort of leaves a strip further to the side where I would normally be riding and isn't sort of adequately sanded or isn't adequately sort of prepared.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out. Is there anyone else? If so, please come forward.
Hello, my name's Alan Carter. I'm here representing myself, and I'm a cyclist, have been a cyclist fifty, fifty years. I think I started when I was two years old. Hit a car the first time I was on a bike, and we hit a car once when I was an adult. And now I do everything I can to avoid hitting cars, and I haven't hit one and I don't plan on hitting one. Actually, the second incident, they hit me, but I was on the road. So, I would encourage you guys, a number of things. If I were mayor for a day, I would make everybody ride a bike for a day and just see what it's like to be a bike with a two thousand pound vehicle right next to you and the news going by you close. I think once, I think everybody should drive a truck once too, to see what it's like to be different vehicles on the road, because when you have a different paradigm shift, you think differently. So, any money that can be spent to improve biking in Anchorage would be money well-spent. It's good for our health and our well-being, our mental, our well-being. We ask any cyclists that commute, how they feel when they get home, and they're like, they're relaxed, they're happy. Ask those car drivers how they get, feel when they get home after five thirty rush hour traffic, and they're more tense probably than when they got in their car. So, cycling, and when you go to work in the morning on your bike, you're awoken by being outside in fresh air as long as you didn't get hit, and you feel well when you get to work. And then you might have a cup of coffee, but you don't need it to be woken up. So, it's, a bike is a great tool, and ninety percent of our population can use them. There's some people that can't and they shouldn't have to use them, and, but I encourage everybody to get out that doesn't ride a bike and try riding a bike on the streets and the trails and just try, get a real feel for what it's like for people that are trying to commute their bike daily. So, I want to end this by saying, spend as much money as you can afford to make biking safer in this city.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pease?
Thank you for your enthusiasm. It's too late for you to take us on tour, but maybe you could get that eighty percent who will get on a bike of the Assembly out, and maybe bike commuters of Anchorage would like to try to get eighty percent of the Assembly out to, to ride some lanes and separated pathways before it comes to them, so.
Would be a good idea. Thanks for you guys' work you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on, come on down.
Last but not least.
Okay.
Hi there, my name is Dawn Growth, and I'm representing myself, and I work with the Bicycle Commuters of Anchorage, and I'm a nurse at the Alaska Native Medical Center.
What was your name again?
Dawn Growth.
Okay.
And I can tell you right now that the biggest health issue we have is obesity, cardiovascular disease, and diabetes, and the only way that we are going to be able to solve these diseases is to encourage kids to get on their bicycles, kids and adults. We've been working for years and years to try to teach people how to eat right and exercise, and still the evidences of obesity and the diseases related to obesity are plummeting higher and higher every year. So, I believe that the only thing we can do is to try to make things safer so people have a reason, there's no excuses why they can't ride their bicycles, and they have a good time made. And I really support this bicycle plan, and I really appreciate Ms. Genke's work on the project.
Okay. Are there any questions? Ms. Pease?
Ms. Growth, I don't know what type of nursing you do, but maybe from your familiarity with the profession, what is the greatest health risk to bicyclists? Would that be collisions or? If you don't have the statistics, that's fine, but I just thought I would try to get those for the record.
I think anytime you mix it, kids and vehicles, you have a really big problem with collisions, and I think that probably accidents are the biggest problem. It's definitely not getting exercise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from commissioners? Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and thanks for all the good work you do. Anyone else? Anyone at all? Well, seeing and hearing no one, Mr. Robinson, we want to go ahead and close the hearing this evening, okay? I will close the hearing, and the matter rests with the commission. I'm assuming that we probably are going to want to do some issue response, you know, have questions and have an issue response summary. Mr. Eishem?
Madam Chair is going to suggest that we get some sort of response on some of the issues that were brought up this evening, you know, specifically perhaps about that north-south pathway that was suggested along the Alaska Railroad right away. I think that needs to be looked at by the, by the staff. And then, you know, maybe the next time we get together, we can go through and do our typical issue response exercise, because most of the two hundred and four hundred, or however many, issues are in here, most of them were accepted by, by staff, and so it would be fairly simple to get those approved, and then we'd have to just deal with the ones that they didn't accept, sort of on an exception basis. But I don't think we're ready to start making sausage this evening.
Yeah, oh, I wholeheartedly concur. I wholeheartedly concur.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just explain one, one piece that's a little different with this plan, but the issue response that you have in your packet was actually the issues that were identified through the public review draft and the comments that came up during, there was a comment period associated with that review draft. And so, what that document is saying is, what was then incorporated into the public hearing draft that you all have before you? So, the difference is, rather than going through those particular issues, the exercise should be to go through the issues that were raised here tonight, or the issues from the previous issue response that you felt, you know, perhaps you felt you disagreed with staff's response. You could, you could actually go back and revisit those, but we would ask that you, in particular, really focus on the new issues that were raised as a part of the public hearing draft process both here tonight as well as in your comment packets, as well as I know we received some comments from at least two individual commissioners.
Madam Chair.
I was just going to point out that I think it's a very good recommendation to adopt the responses and keep them separate from what has already occurred so we can focus on the new changes.
Correct.
But we don't know if these changes have been incorporated. Somebody even said that tonight. The staff said they didn't know and they couldn't say with certainty which ones had been incorporated or not. So, if staff can go through and winnow through this stuff and say, okay, this has been incorporated, da-da-da-da-da, and then give us a list of those that they did incorporate, those that they forgot to incorporate, plus the new stuff, then I suggest that we probably would not have three hundred and something things to look at. We may have fifty things to look at.
That would be nice. Mr. Riddleton?
Just a couple of things to make sure they made it on your list. I guess the railroad is obviously one, and then taking that north-south route and Bicentennial Park so that it's not a core route. And then also, there was a comment about widening Chester Creek, and I don't believe that was addressed anywhere before unless I miss it, just costs and potential. And I don't believe that was addressed anywhere before unless I miss it, just costs and potential of that and benefits of that.
Well, also on issues too, and northern lights, since there are a number of issues that were raised and not just those. I think the staff is probably focused on the issues that were stated this evening or should respond to those.
Right. Yeah, to all the issues that were specifically raised by people testifying this evening or to issues that were raised by commissioners in, you know, during the hearing as well. And commissioners can still, you know, if you did it within a day or two, still submit additional issues you might have yourself, but it would have to be quick. Is it Mr. Yoshimura?
I have a couple of general comments that I want to make. It seems to me that part of our emphasis should be how to get the sixty to seventy percent of the population to ride bicycles or to encourage individuals to ride bicycles. And it seems to me that those are more recreational bicyclists and not the bicycle commuters. And it seems to me that just in listening to the comments and raising some of the issues and this plan, which I think is admirable, that it's skewed more to the bicycle commuters and putting the bike lanes on the road, which sixty to seventy percent of the population will testimony, will never get on that. And, you know, I, I'm not quite sure how I want to say this, but I guess what I want to say is obesity is a lot more complicated issue than getting on a bike. And because if it was only just about getting on a bike, I would be thin, you know, because I am a weekend bicyclist. But I also bike on the bike path and I'm terrified of getting on the road. And when I have to get on the road, I don't want to go. So, I only want to go where there's a bike path because I feel a lot safer than that. And I think my feelings are pretty typical. And I think this bike plan, because of the public input, I'm not going to go to a bike plan forum, you know, and voice my comments. But obviously, those people that are bicycle commuters are very articulate and-
And very tuned in.
And very tuned into it. And so, I have a little bit of concern about this plan because it does advocate the bike lane on the road, which I think for the vast majority of bicyclists is a very dangerous thing in general.
Well, the reality is, as we heard tonight, the majority of the bicyclists will never ride in the road.
Absolutely.
They will only ride on the trails. And part of our problem in Anchorage with our trails has to do with maintenance of the trails. They're in, many of them are in horrid condition and they're not safe to ride on. They're not safe to run on either. People get twisted ankles and have problems. So, that's something we can talk about, but most of the people that probably use it on the weekends or in the evenings with their kids and have the family out riding on the trails, they don't pay attention to things like these plans. They're busy going to Cub Scout meetings, going to sports with their kids, and they don't even read about this stuff because they're just doing it for recreation and fun. It is an exercise, but it's not a way of life for them as far as transportation. Yes.
Which is admirable.
Absolutely.
But it doesn't address the vast majority of-
The public.
Of the public.
So, we have to ask ourselves the question, which public are we serving?
You know, my guess is, is that we're serving a variety of publics. And I think that this is a very general and very important issue. And I think this window staff has to do, that they have to provide assurance to the commission that the front range of our needs, bicycle needs, are brought with inside the plan. My guess is you have recommendations for buck lines, you have recommendations for on-street facilities. So, you know, given the fact that both types of facilities are primarily to benefit, having gone through a little bit of turn, you need to provide us reassurance, or perhaps not, that in fact the plan is dealing with a wide variety of interests and cyclists.
Yes. Mr. Riddleton?
Well, I have looked this as, when I ride by myself, I'm a one percenter. But when I ride with my kids, I'm in this sixty to seventy percent. My view of the entire non-motorized transportation package is you've got the pedestrian plan that we've done and then this one, but the trails plan is to me the one that would address that sixty to seventy percent. For me riding by myself to get here wherever I go, it's not appropriate for me to be on most trails because I'm traveling at 20 miles an hour or higher and it's not compatible with the use of those trails. But Chester Creek Trail and so on, when I'm with my kids, we run very slowly and we can mix with pedestrians, we're not a menace to them, we're going not much faster than them often, slower than many runners. So, maybe this plan would be better named Utility Bike Plan instead of Bike Plan in General. And I just look forward to the trails plan addressing the kind of needs that the sixty to seventy percent would, you know, mighters such as yourself, slower speed, recreational riding.
Or maybe a commuter bike plan or something, but if we're not going to include, you know, trails for bike use.
Well, part of this one is a commuter bike, mighters saying. Oh, they're bound to utility in case we're going shopping and not to work, so.
I don't think that's the case. I mean, I think we should allow staff the opportunity to respond to that issue.
I agree.
And we shouldn't come to a conclusion at this point.
You're right. Ms. Pease?
Yes, on that topic, staff probably would think of this on their own, but, you know, a lot of these corridors overlay each other. And if you could print for the commission just a very quick temporary map that takes off the on-street and shows us the separated paths, I can see that many of the facilities like Raspberry Road have both, but you put the on-street color over the top of the separated pathway. So, I think that there'll be some reassurance if there is a pretty good network of separated paths if you show us just that layer. And then, the other comment I would say in trying to make sure that we are addressing the sixty to seventy percent occasional bikers or timid bikers in this plan is this is a transportation plan. And we all know that transportation funding does much better in this town than recreation type funding. And that's an issue that I've mentioned already and I want to bring it up to make sure that this remains seen as a plan that serves transportation. I'd be up for more than five to six percent.
Anything further? Do we need to postpone this to a date certain, Mr. Robinson? And right now before you're, while you're looking for a date, it is my hope that for the remainder of the year, we only have two meetings a month. We're approaching holiday seasons and fall activity seasons that families engage in. So, you may have to tack it on to a Title 21 night. We're going, we have to deal with some of our other work on the second Monday of the month. And Title 21 just may have to move back. Or you get to decide the priority between them.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you were looking for an actual date certain to postpone?
Well, we need to postpone to a date certain.
What you could do at this point, just to give you an idea on, and make sure all of you got your email that I sent out.
Uh-huh.
We had a special meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, which we've canceled or in effect postponed to the second Monday of October, which is the 12th. Those second Mondays are generally reserved for-
Planning.
Planning, long-range planning, Title 21, those sorts of things. Right now, the Hillside District Plan has been moved to the 12th and I would anticipate it still taking up several hours that particular evening.
Correct.
Outside of that, you're then looking at the two November meetings. What you could do is you could schedule it for the first meeting in November and if the schedule fills up, you could move it to the second meeting in November.
Okay. Because zoning cases have to have priority at the first meeting in November.
And with zoning cases having priority on the second, but if there are-
Zoning cases have priority on the first meeting.
I'm sorry, the first Monday in November is actually the second of November, that's what I meant.
Yes.
You're right. So, that way, if there aren't the cases, you are then prepared to take up the bike plan on the second of November.
Okay. Otherwise, we'll move it to the ninth.
The ninth.
Okay. And what do you have for the ninth of?
Well, we'll of course be through Title 21. Actually, we'll be through, we are through Title 21, the main chunk of it. We'll be through the Hillside District Plan, I'm hoping. And so, really what it would be is bringing outstanding Title 21 issues, kind of a cleanup issues.
Okay. Are we talking about December?
We're, I'm looking at November night right now. So, we're right now putting together a schedule of the remaining Title 21 issues to come back to you before the code takes effect.
Okay. Well, we should be able to get these things done before the end of the year.
I think, in speaking to Lori, the desire is to get the bike plan through the Assembly at the end of the year. So, we'd like to at least go for November and at least get it into the Assembly's schedule by the end of the year.
Okay. We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that we can then, somebody can make a motion to postpone till the second of November. I bet that's going to be Mr. Isham.
Madam Chair, some words?
Oh, I think Mr. Riddleton just seconded it. Thank you. Is there any objection?
Madam Chair, I just want to note that I have travel plans and will probably will not be here November 2nd, so that is just for general information.
Okay, well, we'll have all your input. Okay. Which we always appreciate, Ms. Pease. You always leave us a roadmap. Thank you. Any objection? Hearing none. That is approved. That is postponed till November 2nd. It would come up under, if we hear it that night, it would come under unfinished business if we don't have any zoning cases. Otherwise, we'll move it to the ninth of November under unfinished business. Moving on. We're not quite done yet. The next case was postponed till the 5th of October, Case G3. Reports from the chair. I have a report about Thursday night work session or whatever it's called on the highway to highway. How many of you are planning on attending that? I know you're not. Are you, John? You're not. Are you Bruce? No. Are you Arne? See, and are you? No, you're not, Connie. Are you Jim?
I'm not.
Okay. It's important for those of you that attend to remember that we're there in just a brainstorming capacity and anything that we say, they need to understand that anything we say is not to be construed as action by the commission. It's intended to be just brainstorming and that's it. And it's very important that any comments that are made there do not come out as being a recommendation that we've bought into any scenario. We as a group have bought into any scenario, one way or another. Now, my goal is to be there, but I have a grandson I have to take for a three and a half hour medical appointment that afternoon and it doesn't get over till 6:00. And then I have to get him on a plane to Kenai. And so, I'm going to see if my husband can help me with part of that, maybe the getting him on the plane part. So, I may, if I come, I'll probably be there a little late. Otherwise, depending on how everything comes out, I may not be there, but my goal is to be there. But kids are unpredictable or stuff like this with kids. Anyway, are most of you planning to be at the directors' meeting on Thursday? It's going to be important, yes, so if you can make it, that would be good. Do we have anything from First Secretary's report, Mr. Robinson?
No, we don't.
Okay. And I know for committees, we have our Hillside District Plan Subcommittee is busy, been very busy and we appreciate all your work and I understand you're meeting again Tuesday.
That's right.
And I do thank you all for all your hard work. Okay, does anyone have any comments this evening?
Madam Chair, in regards to this thing you got from Jerry Weaver dated September 3rd on applicability of the comprehensive plan elements, I would like that to be discussed at this Thursday meeting.
Okay, can we put that on the agenda? If you could do that, put that on the agenda for Thursday?
We can. I think we have a pretty full, we'll put it at the bottom of the agenda and if we don't get to it, I don't know.
Well, we'll just, we'll have some of the things fly fast. This is pretty important.
Okay.
From Mr. Weaver, the honor of his presence has been requested. And I also have on the agenda to talk about the issue that I had raised earlier about late submittals, et cetera, correct? Okay.
That's already on the agenda as well as, I think Greg Jones will be there and Bob Kenefer will be there to discuss.
Yeah, our meeting may run over a little bit, but it'll be okay.
Yeah, especially when the community changes significantly around it. Like we have a new runway road or something. Okay. Any other comments, Ms. Dean? Mr. Fogg? We're going to get you out of here early.
Yes.
Mr. Riddleton?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Isham?
Used up my quota.
Okay, Ms. Pease? Just that I would like to see those three issues that were raised in the Walmart case go on some kind of work list or response, list from staff.
Okay. Mr. Frederick?
I'm not sure.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Yeah, it would be nice to have a report given to us of what the Assembly does. We used to get an action summary from the Assembly that would just, we would get it handed out to us where, you know, then when there were zoning cases on the agenda or appeals or something, we used to just always be notified and that just kind of dropped by the wayside at some point.
I'll look into it. You're saying both zoning cases and ordinances that come through?
Yeah, that go to the Assembly so we can find out what they did with it and if they changed it. Yes, good question, good issue. From our secretary, secretary, do you have any suggestions for us how we can technically perform better?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay.
Oh, darn. Sorry, I will make it quick, I'll make it quick. First of all, do be careful not to get too close to your mic because unlike him, I am not as quick and do have to listen back through and occasionally it's very hard to understand if you're too close to your mic. Secondly, do be aware that because we are using the Granica system and hopefully within the next month to two months, it'll be made public and available to the public, that these meetings are live. That means that when we start the meeting, we start it live 15 minutes ahead and even though your mics are off, you can- though your mics are off, you can still pick up background noise. So as a courtesy, you might want to remember to keep your voices way down, because I believe that mic is on, and whether, I've checked, because after the meeting gets posted, after the meeting gets posted, I trim that front part. But if somebody wants to click in live, they're going to be listening. So just a heads up, it's not totally clear, but if somebody were persistent, yes, they could probably get there somehow. So just for the record, that's where we're headed. We're also headed towards what I call action minutes. So when, once I post it on the web, you'll get an email that says, first of all, you'll get an email that says it's posted on the web, it's available out there. If you missed a meeting, click in and listen, and you can catch the items you missed. The second item would be action minutes, which would be unapproved minutes, but only of the action items that got approved, the motion and the vote. And those would get replaced with the approved minutes after that. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment, trying to get it scheduled and coordinated, and still learn at the same time, so.
Just to comment, I did get a notification that I had missed the public hearing on the Hillside District Plan, because I was out of town, but I got an email that it was available, and got a link to the streaming audio, which is a heck of a lot more convenient than tape.
Than getting tape, yeah.
So that was a big improvement.
I will mention, too, that even though we do have it on streaming, we can send you the link, it is available out there if you were persistent enough to find it, but I can also send you the link now. Also, that you can, we can still load it onto like a CD, or email a clip of a section to you. It might have to be zipped or something like that. I have not had the experience to try that yet. So lots of things happening out there. Thank you.
You know, I've got a question on, if I do this, what is too close to this mic? Is it over here? Or should I be ...
Too close is about like this. I think some of it has to do with you have a deeper voice, too. So you just want to stay kind of, you know ...
You need a signal, then. So if we're ...
I can't, my earphone ...
She can't tell when she's ...
My earphone is time-delayed. So you can start talking, but I'm not going to hear it until a little bit after. So, you know, it's like, did you turn your mic on? It's already too late, you already started, and I missed the little first part, possibly, or if you will, the record will have it.
You need a bleep button.
When members of the audience tell you they had to turn down their hearing aid when you talk, that was at least the indicator to me that I was too close to the mic. Well, I had someone say I was, I needed to speak up down there. He said, "Get closer to the mic," so.
You just need to, you need to use your outside voice a little farther away from the mic.
I do have another suggestion, and that is, once you have a link, you can go in and listen, and see how you sound, or, what can I say? It's a different perspective.
Oh, we shouldn't ask. No, those are good suggestions, Madam Six. It was educational? Good, Commissioner. Good, Commissioner. Okay, are we ready to go home? I think somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a adjourn.
Somebody would like to second it.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have Mr. Frederick in the queue. Okay, any objection? No objection. We're adjourned. Time to go home.